Session for March 19th, 2018. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Brownie?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle? Here. And item two on the agenda is introductions. And Dave Stage could not be with us tonight. I think Steve's going to handle all of his stuff too, right? Him and Bob Lamb? Very good. Okay. I guess what we really want to hear is the role of the finance and economic development. We're going to start with that one and you're going to tell us how this all works.
Absolutely. Come up here and tell us.
Sure, if you come to the microphone.
This is how well does this work? I don't remember.
Not that formal.
I'm Mayor. I'm Mr. City Council.
Okay. Steve Cuckler, Attorney at Taffs, Lieutenant Minister, up the street. And for the purposes of this right here, we're counsel for the Delaware County Finance Authority. Bob's going to talk a little bit about it and then we'll kind of go back and forth. We don't have any formal presentation to give you on the Finance Authority. I had some, there's some other things unrelated if we have time. But the Finance Authority has been around here in Delaware for quite a few years. I want to say roughly 10 years I think it was created. And most recently, last two years, it's really picked up a lot of speed with a lot of different projects. Councilman Schaefer serves on that board as well, so it's good that the city has a representative there. But I mean, I think it dovetails well with what Bob is trying to do. Of course, I know Bob and the city work well together, but maybe Bob, why don't you just say a few things about it? And then I can get into the particulars of a couple of things that I've prepared.
Bob Lamb, Economic Development Director for the county. I'm here today to talk about the Finance Authority and hopefully be able to answer questions that you may have regarding that matter. Approximately two years ago, the commissioners decided to enlarge the Finance Authority Board. They brought on new members. And since then, we've really been doing a lot more projects, a lot more active in the community, while previously the Finance Authority had really taken more of a backseat type role in economic development issues within the county. The Finance Authority is a quasi-governmental entity. It's established by the county. The board members, which are seven, are appointed by the county commissioners. They serve various terms. And the main really orientation of the Finance Authority is to help promote commercial development within the county. They have several tools in which they can do that. One of the main ones which they use is the sales tax abatement. And what this allows them to do is enter into agreements with private commercial properties and take ownership of those properties for a period of three years. That ownership allows, and I guess let me say this, term can be longer depending upon the authority. It's three to seven. The Delaware County Finance Authority has normally used three years as a term. What that allows the owner, well, the developer of the property to do is to avoid having to pay sales tax for construction materials. And there's a whole list outlined for what that's applicable for. But that basically reduces the construction costs on a project by 7%. And so if you have a multimillion dollar project, 5, 10, 15, 20 million, normally about half that cost is going to be construction materials, roughly 50%, 40 to 50%. And so you're removing 7% of perhaps a $10 million cost. So 700,000 in savings being generated for that specific project. And that can really help make a commercial project move forward, close the gap between what's financeable or not, or allow the developer to take that savings and put it into infrastructure type improvements that otherwise they would not be able to finance. So it's just a way to help move projects forward and secure more infrastructure investment within the community, which can help bring about more investment opportunities, creating more jobs and securing more tax dollars.
Step by step, you're right through.
Yeah.
So does it have to go with the infrastructure?
No.
So they can put it in the bucket?
They, absolutely. It's a 7% savings. The hope is that then you can have other items that they were struggling to be able to finance, be able to complete with that savings. But as you said, it is not mandatory. And so that allows for more growth. And so it's a tool that many communities have used throughout Ohio. Delaware County, as I said previously, has not been overly active in that regards in the past. In the last few years, it's been pushed much more. It was used to help the Renaissance in Westerville develop, as well as currently being looked at for several other projects right now. The other main tool that the Finance Authority can bring is through a bonding, taxes and bond financing. It is about $10 million a year in tax and bond financing it can issue. And what that does is just provide a different financing mechanism that can help save the developers some money on the financing scheme that they put in place to fund their project. So those are really the two main tools that can be used to help commercial investment move along. Many communities establish guidelines on how these types of incentives can be used. For Delaware County, we do not provide the sales tax waiver for retail oriented projects. So it's really reserved for your office, multi-family, industrial type projects. That's what's being promoted right now through the Finance Authority with those tools.
So what's the difference between the Port Authority that was there and now we have this Finance Authority?
The Port Authority and the Finance Authority are the same thing. Sorry for not covering.
You just changed their name.
Yeah, the state of Ohio allowed you to change the name to a Finance Authority. And so those communities that don't have ports have moved to a Finance Authority because it was confusing when, well, what port do you represent?
So what is it, what about prevailing wages?
Finance Authorities can waive the prevailing wage requirement on projects. It's done for various, it's done differently in various communities. We have not had a project yet where the Finance Authority was used to waive prevailing wage. They are open to looking at that, but obviously it needs to make sense for all the partners involved.
It's really data that tells us how often that savings is kept by the developer and how often it is put back in the infrastructure?
They're private deals, so I don't have any specific data.
So basically, one of the big advantages of the Finance Authority is they can make it more economically feasible for somebody to develop here versus somewhere else, right?
Yes.
So how would, can you just kind of walk us through, like, if somebody's got a project, how does that work? Do they put the Finance Authority, the Finance Authority decides that they're going to work with them? Kind of walk us through the steps of how that works?
Yeah, sure, Councilman. Yeah, so let me just take, draw up a little bit and take a 10,000-foot view, right? So, right, so I'm blessed to represent a lot of commercial developers. And one of the things that's looked at in doing commercial development, right, it's, I mean, I have it on the slide here, but it comes down to land cost, right? How much does it cost to buy a piece of ground in your community, right? So land cost, what are the utilities, right? Do they have water? Do they have sewer? Okay, if not, then how much does it cost to get it there? If they do have it, how much is the tap fees cost, all that kind of stuff? What's the road infrastructure, right? And then the fourth thing is zoning, right? Okay, do they have the zoning? Do they not have the zoning? If it's, and then, okay, if they don't, what's the process to get that done? Is that an easy process? Is that a cumbersome process? So those are four things. So when you get to like land cost, you know, sometimes in Delaware County, our land costs aren't maybe as competitive to even New Albany's land cost, Dublin's land cost, Grove City's land cost, to be honest with you. So the sales tax exemption on the cost of construction helps, how should I say, abate, if you will, for lack of a better word, kind of level the playing field a little bit. So that's why a lot of commercial developers like it. Because, I mean, Delaware County and then the city, right, it's a great site. Everybody wants to be here. There's a few obstacles to that, but that sales tax exemption issued to the Finance Authority helps level the playing field. And so I'll get to your question here in a second. Sorry, I should be a councilman, like I can dodge a question. Sorry. No. But I will tell you, so I'll give you an example, one thing that, for example, the city of Westerville, right? So about a third of the city of Westerville is in Delaware County. On all projects at the city of Westerville pitches, right, so they got companies that, you know, there's different RFPs and site locators are running around. Anytime the city of Westerville submits a, a package of, hey, here's what the city of Westerville can do, you know, whatever that is, they always include now the Finance Authority's sales tax exemption because that's a competitive edge that they have that maybe some of the other communities in central Ohio maybe aren't thinking right out of the gate, if you will. So I know that's something they do. So they have something they've recently done. So the process is, is right, you get a, you get a commercial builder, developer, who is building, whether it be a site-specific project, or maybe they're just doing kind of a, you know, a project, not, maybe they don't have any specific users, but we think there might be a user down the road. Then they would have, either through the city of Delaware or through a township, then they usually come, approach Bob as the Economic Development Director for the county. The director then lets us know, Mr. Stage, the chairman. And then we sit down, have conversations with that individual about the savings. And then typically, right, get authority from, the Finance Authority signs off. And then we, there's a negotiation of the term, of those term sheets of, you know, what's the, you know, what's the savings? How long is the various term of the lease of the property? I mean, a lot of that stuff is negotiable. So that's pretty, I mean, the process is quick. We turned around some of these in less than 45 days. So it's a very quick process and, and starting to get a really good reputation with a lot of the key, you know, kind of commercial folks around central Ohio. So it's a easy, very easy process. Just call Bob.
And there's an online application that begins that process. And then it flows through just several steps from there, going to the Finance Committee of the Finance Authority. And from there to the overall Finance Authority. And then normally terms are negotiated. And the boards, the Finance Authority Board, has been more than willing to hold special meetings or do other things to move projects along within a timeframe that's acceptable to that developer, really trying to be oriented to be customer-friendly and pro-development within the county.
How many do you think you've done so far?
On the, on the sales tax waiver, there's probably four or five that have been done. And now we have a pipeline of over 20, I would say. So again, it's picked up. Again, part of that's the economy too. As the economy's picked up and more opportunities have come along over the last three years or so, there's just more opportunities as developers are able to move capital around.
Yeah, I think the key thing is, is once you do one project for a commercial builder, then, you know, they all talk, right? They all hang out at the same places and, right, so they talk, right? So that's why treating one person well begets another project, right? So, and, and that's what we found, right? Just by doing the last couple, the last year, doing a couple, handling a couple of good projects, you know, being fair, being timely, that beget someone talking to so-and-so who then called Bob up and was like, hey, what's this Finance Authority thing? So then we sit down and explain to them. So it's really been, it's really been an attractive thing for folks.
I think one of the things that is often forgotten throughout development process is just how long it is to get a project from conception to being vertical out of the ground and open to the public. You have one year of construction, but then you have about one year worth of zoning and other paperwork that you do. Going back then, you have about another year's work of just financing, putting in place the different mechanisms and structures that will allow you to go forward through all these different projects. So projects are anywhere from three to a five-year pipeline oftentimes if you're doing large-scale construction. That means when developers are actually getting to the zoning process, they can be $100,000 into a project or more. And then going through that process, they could be another $150,000, $250,000 into a project. So it is really time-intensive and cash-outlay-heavy on the front. And just to find out if you're going to be able to go develop your project, which is why it's so important to have a good relationship with them on the front end and be engaged. And even if the answer's no, to let them know that very quickly, whether it's the Finance Authority or somebody else, you can't do a deal or provide a certain incentive.
Sean, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just by that, the sales tax abatement waiver and the financing options have been on our, our files. They both have a working team. And even then, before they allowed you to, back when they allowed you to use all sorts of Finance Authorities, we actually had the option of going after, you know, the Columbus Springs County Finance Authority or the local Finance Authority. But now, obviously, with the state laws changed, we're just working with them. If there's something they can't do, we have permission from them to use another Finance Authority. But in this situation, obviously, who's going to use the local? That's actually also been on our web slate for economic development as a partner, as partner incentives. We have incentives that we offer in partner incentives that we can partner with other folks to offer particular projects.
And it should also be noted that the Finance Authority and county have done several joint letters through the city's Economic Development Office to support the attempt to attract projects to the community.
Do you have any projects that haven't been approved?
That, that haven't been approved? Yeah, yes, there have been some that are currently either wait-listed or look like they're not going to be moving forward. And oftentimes, it's just the size or scope of the project or decision that it's at a certain point where it would occur one way or another, and there isn't a benefit to the community for stepping in and providing that sales tax abatement waiver at that time.
Are there limitations to that sales tax abatement waiver based on where those items are sourced from?
No.
Okay.
It's just really, you're extending a nonprofit, basically, stance to the developer for that specific project and they're able to use that form when they're reporting or when they're acquiring goods.
In order to, again, just the sales tax waiver and financing, the Finance Authority takes ownership of the building leases and backs the developer, right?
Correct. Capital lease type structure, where it runs for about three years, is our standard, though it can be different. And upon the completion of that term, the property reverts back to the developer. And oftentimes, there are demification paperwork that the Finance Authority wants in place to make sure that it's not liable for any items that may occur throughout their ownership of the building.
Other questions by council? I know Chris is contemplating over there, I can see it. This came about because we were talking about the authority with the Cohatch, because that building. And there was a lot of confusion on council. That's why we decided we needed to do this once, so we understand all the tools in our toolbox in order to keep moving forward.
And we're happy to come back or provide any assistance or additional paperwork that would be helpful.
How is it staffed? I know right now you're in a sense through Bob. You look at increasing capacity. Obviously, Bob's the county's EV person, but now with this new portfolio of, of options that you have, talking to developers, is there interest in?
There are currently conversations going on between the county commissioners and the Finance Authority Board to look at different ways in which they could structure support for the Finance Authority. No set way, or there's no set decision yet at this point for how that would look. But I think both sides agree that as the Finance Authority increases the transactions that it's involved with, additional staff in some format will be needed to support.
I know when we were doing the Cohatch discussion a few months ago, in addition to speaking with Delaware County, I reached out to Jean Carter Ryan. She is the executive director of the Franklin County Finance Authority. She was, you know, as positive as these guys are about the ability, that's a tool, it's one more tool. They talked about the Rome Fitness Project in Columbus, how they got involved in that. A lot of unique partnerships that you wouldn't, otherwise have thought possible. But in today's environment where costs are high, it's more competitive, you have to look at these tools. So it's one that I think, hopefully, we'll be able to, to identify an appropriate role for, whether it's a Cohatch-like project or a, or a development of some kind. And that's, it's helpful. It's going to be helpful.
Hey, and I think we mostly want you to know that we're here and happy to assist when needed.
Okay, I know that you, part of it, you wanted to hear from Steve.
Yeah, Steve gave a presentation at ED 4011, which was, I thought, pretty helpful, a lot of good information. So I've asked him to kind of revisit that with us and just kind of give us his thoughts on how.
Yeah, no problem. I appreciate the opportunity. Right, so this is Steve Cuckler, Attorney at Law. No, I'm not speaking on my capacity as council of the Finance Authority now. The past muster.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Right. Yeah, so, so real quick, right, so I appreciate that, Tom, appreciate that, Councilman Schaefer. So it was a blessing, opportunity to speak down at this ED 4011, which is the big central Ohio. You guys do that once, twice a year, something like?
Once a year.
Yeah, once a year. And this was a presentation to newly-elected office holders around central Ohio on, you know, what is economic development and so forth. So this is something I put together. And you'll see it just obviously tapped, but you'll see Delaware Now, right? So some of you might be familiar with Delaware Now. That's a 501(c)(3) organization through the Delaware County Foundation. We're a separate entity, but managed through them. And that's just a private group of businesses, landowners, farmers, I mean, a whole plethora of folks just kind of dedicated to economic development. And looking, looking to focus on planning the 23 corridors, maybe that's another meeting, but, but just to give you, just to give you a little heads up about that. So real quick, right, so what I did was, I think it's important to take a step back. Sometimes you can get into weeds and minutia real quick on economic development. And you can get caught up with this acronym and that, this and that. But I think, I'm going to be honest with you, I think so much of economic development and the successes I've seen representing companies is, it starts with like the vision, right? You know, what's the vision for the community, right? And then that vision, you can have a broader vision for the entire city. And then obviously you can kind of have different visions for subareas and so forth. So I think it's key to, you know, what is the vision for the city of Delaware when it comes to economic development, right? And then the last thing, and then the second thing is you got to do is you got to lead. So, and then I think this is an important question that communities have to answer to themselves. This is, are our community really committed to economic development, right? We, we all have, you know, every community has a Department of Economic Development and there's Finance Authorities and CICs and all this kind of stuff. But at the end of the day, you know, is the community truly committed to economic development? And so when I'm, when I discuss economic development, I'm mainly referring to commercial development, right? I think is important. And I just put that quote in there. It's one of my, my late partner, he used to be the mayor of Columbus, talked about being committed, right? Chicken and eggs and, or pigs and eggs. And the pig is obviously committed at breakfast, the chicken is not. So it's just something to really keep in mind, though, is are you truly committed to economic development, right? I know, I know, one of many, right? So a good way to look at that, so first of all, do you have a vision? The second thing is, is are you really committed to economic development? And, and so a good way to do that, right, I know Sean and his folks do a good job, is okay, what do your current employers say about you, right? I mean, that's easiest, that's the first thing to ask, right? Is, do they say great things? Hey, the city of Delaware is awesome, or don't they? I mean, you know, I don't know, but I mean, just saying, those are the kind of questions you would ask yourselves. Second question would be, okay, what are these various site locators, site selectors and commercial developers? What would they say, right? For example, when a commercial, a lot of people think that it's some magic formula or something. Really, I mean, there's, there's limited parcels of land. Certain uses require certain types of parcels of land. So you look for those parcels of land. A parcel of land could be in Troy Township. It could be in, and then the other one that, boy, that's one's not bad, is, is maybe out in Springfield somewhere. So then you talk to the local communities and, and evaluate all the different, different factors. So what would those folks who do that kind of stuff, what would they say about the community? And the next thing is important is like know your market, know your community. I think the other important thing is to know what other communities are doing. I'm a big proponent of this. You know, I do a lot of work in a lot of different communities around the Midwest. And some communities are more aggressive than others. And some communities are easier to work with than others. And it's important to know what, what we're doing, right? Because in this economy today, we are in a regional, we're in a regional struggle, if you will, for attracting businesses, right? Because I can, I can go here, but I can go there, right? So why would I go here, right? So it's important to know what other communities are doing so you're, so you're ultimately competitive. Again, as I was referring to this earlier, is, you know, these are four big things, right? Is, you know, okay, how much does the land cost? And then what is the zoning? Roads and utilities, right? That's what it comes down to. And if you, if you go down the list and you're a check on each of these, then, then, then you're in a competitive standpoint. Now, many communities, most communities are, are good on some, not all. And there's a few around, there's a few that are good on all those. But, you know, what's the road network, right? Is the road infrastructure good around here? We need a road built to this new site. Okay, well, who's going to pay for that? And how's that going to get done? Those kind of questions. Is there sewers? Is there water out to the site? If not, how's that going to get out there and, and what's the timing? Zoning, right? Zoning is a huge hurdle in a lot of places. So, and many times the engineer, and these are all like, a lot of these, the last three are engineer zoning department specific issues. So when it comes to economic development, right, the zoning folks and the, and the traffic engineers are on the front lines, boots on the ground, if you will, for economic development. Because those are the folks that people are interacting with. You know, they'll meet here and, and you guys will shake hands with council and George will smile for a nice picture or whatever. But at the end of the day, they're working with the zoning folks and the engineering folks, right? And they're, and they, and they're either figuring it all out or they're not, right? So I mean, the zoning and engineering is critical to economic development. And a lot, a lot of the things that folks look for is, a lot of commercial, you know, just tell us what you want, right? A lot of it is, you know, ball moves, right? You know, the goal line was here and then the next project, the goal line's down there. So I think a lot of this is certainty, predictability, speed, and then political stability, right? Is, okay, at the end of the day, you know, is the political leader's going to back what's being done, right? There are some communities where the staff is 1,000% on board with the project, but then maybe the trustees or council is, are not, or vice versa. So I think it's important, these three things, four things, is the certainty, predictability and speed. And there are some communities that are, that are really fast, and then there are some that are, that are not, right? So again, in this competitive environment, you know, it's important to analyze, you know, what are the, how do we measure up on those four factors? And then the last thing is, you know, how can we create a win-win for the community and the project, right? I think that's a question, right? You know, jobs, or I think we all recognize as Delawareans, right, is, right? What's the percentage now? How many people work outside who live here but work outside of the community?
Approximately 80% of our workforce within the county goes south to Franklin. Counting every day, the workforce is 100,000. So it's 80,000 cars going south at the same time and north at the same time.
Right, and I, yeah, I don't know what the numbers are specifically for the city. I imagine they're probably the, roughly the same, okay? So at the end of the day, right, how do you build more workforce, more jobs here, right, in the, in the community? And, and then ultimately, that's a win-win, right? That brings taxes, that brings jobs, et cetera, to the community and puts less people on 23, which is probably not a bad thing. But that's kind of just a high level of a presentation I did at ED 4011 that I thought might be helpful for you guys to kind of maybe look at.
So Steve, with those things that you mentioned, the land costs, surrounding roads, utility, and then the certainty, predictability, speed, et cetera. So the communities that are good at this stuff, is what you're saying, this is the stuff, I mean, we can't control land costs, right? The other piece of this, that's the stuff that we want to make sure we're doing well.
Yeah, you control what you can control, right? Influence what you can influence. And, you know, you know, there are certain, sometimes when you get into these discussions, you know, you, you know, certain communities have advantages, whether it be a certain wealthy member of society lives there or something that's always kind of thrown in people's faces is why, you know, a certain town always wins projects. But I think that's a, you know, that's a, that's an excuse, in my opinion, right? Is, so you play to your strengths, right? So, okay, we don't maybe have that, but, you know, we've got great location, right? People want to locate their businesses here in Delaware County and Delaware City. So how do we make it easy for them, or easier for them, so that, you know, they can go talk to their friends about how awesome it was to get through the process? But no, the predictability and the certainty and the speed, right? What I've found is just tell us what you want us to do, right? And then nine out of 10 times, it'll, it'll happen. But what happens sometimes, you get bogged down at the projects, I mean, this could be anywhere, is, you know, the ball moves or, you know, things don't, it takes a lot of time for people to get back to them or what have you. So those are very important factors when it comes to commercial investment.
What, as far as central Ohio goes, where would you rank the city of Delaware?
What uh, as far as central Ohio goes, where would you rank the city of Delaware? And what are some things you've seen or heard that we could do better?
Sure, um, yeah, the city of Delaware has some awesome things going for, right? Uh, location, uh, you got the schools, people wanna live here. Um, when people live here, they wanna, you know, they wanna locate their businesses here, they wanna work here. You know, you got, we got some awesome manufacturing base, we got awesome um distributor here in, in, in town. And um, and, and you got some of the largest land mass assembled for uh future um industrial development in central Ohio, as far as I know. I just think that, and one of the problems that affect all of us in Delaware County, but in Delaware City is, is our traffic, is roads, right? How do you get there, right? Um, you know, to get to Delaware City, you're either coming up twenty-three, right? From a regional connection, right? So from like two seventy or something is twenty-three, you know, how can we make that better, right? Um, you got, you're going through two, three jurisdictions before you even get to the city of Delaware, right? You get through Orange, Columbia, Columbus, Orange, Berlin, Liberty, and then the city of Delaware. Um, so how, how can twenty-three be improved, right? Uh, seventy-one, thirty-six, we have one exit in Delaware County in all, in all intents and purposes, right? Um, we need more, more of those, right? Um, so infrastructure, I think would be, would be one thing that would help us all. Um, and then, you know, right, the more predictable, the more certain, the more uh, and the faster you are with um engineering and zoning decision, that's always a good thing.
Where would you rank us among?
How would you rank?
Yeah.
I don't know how I'd rank um.
I mean, ease of doing business.
No, I mean, my project specifically, right? I mean, it's, the, the city of Delaware's been fantastic to work with, absolutely. Um, but I would say though that you can always improve, right? Because again, um, when folks look at central Ohio, right? They might have just one or two sites within central Ohio. One, and one might be in the city of Delaware, it might not, right? It just depends on the site locator and the needs and the demands. But I would say, you know, you can always, um, it can always be, I know you're looking for a number, I guess I can't give you a rank. But what I would tell you though is, things can always be better. Once you get the one key uh site, key developer, then that begets more commercial development. Because these guys or gals talk, right? If you took care and a great, uh, you know, a new proj- uh, project came in and it was fantastic and everybody was fantastic to work with from, you know, bottom all the way to the top, that gets around. People talk about um how, how great it is to, you know, how great it is to work with them. But I would also say, I think is important, um, and this goes back, geez, when I was on council, these discussions, but is um, you know, some sites fit well in Orange Township or Sunbury or, or um Ostrander or whatever. Um, and then some sites fit better in city of Delaware, right? So, but it's, I think it's important that, the key thing is for Delaware County, including the cities, probably look at, is to look at it that we're all together, if you will. Um, historically, there was kind of a Delaware City versus the townships or the townships versus Delaware City or something like that historically. I think it's important to note that Delaware County, every community in Delaware County has something unique to offer to commercial sites. And not all commercial sites, again, are gonna fit well in one community or the other. So I, I think the more county, regional approach that um is, is good, right? So what's good for Orange is good for Delaware City. And what's good for Delaware City is good for Sunbury, et cetera. I, I believe that wholeheartedly because people don't say, oh, that's on the Orange Township, Berlin Township line. No, what people say is Delaware County. And so, I mean, it is what it is. So when they say, they don't differentiate between Delaware City and, and Orange, if you will, right? It's just Delaware County. So the more altogether we are pulling the plow in the same direction would be helpful.
You know, I, I've heard since I've been on council, what a great places is to live because our schools are great, because of this and this and this. You know, and then it's always been, well, we didn't have the connectivity, we didn't have the roads we need to do. So now we have Sawmill, and done for two years, and this is so frustrating because there's still, I know it's only two years, but in my mind, it's been two years and there's nothing going on yet. And that's my frustration. And eighty percent of the people every day leave the city. That's money that we're losing and that, that's, that's where my frustrations come in.
True.
That's not against you, Sean, so don't pick a person, it's just, it's frustrating, it really is. And I know they're not job-ready sites.
Sure.
That's part of the problem. And the other problem is, we don't have our um, our employment, we're three percent. Why would somebody wanna come here when they know that there aren't, isn't anybody tired?
To work, right?
That's very frustrating.
Due to the sawmill issue too, part of that is just utilities weren't put in at the same time that Sawmill was constructed. And again, it goes back to the four major items that Steve spoke about. Without utilities, you just don't have a site that's ready to go. And we see that along thirty-six, thirty-seven as well as a community, which is one of the main reasons why we're currently doing the corridor study um along thirty-six, thirty-seven so that we can be ready once we get sanitary sewer um along that um stretch.
Yeah, I'll just add on, that's shovel-ready sites is critical um more so than ever because if, if central Ohio is in um, is in competition against Raleigh or Austin or, or whatever it is, or Indianapolis, um, right? So, you know, it's important for the region to be ready. And I think obviously the region is doing a fantastic job of that. But then within the region, right, which includes us, right? It's important that, okay, when the Jobs Ohio folks in Columbus twenty-twenty get a call from somebody that says, hey, what sites do you have for X, Y and Z, right? Um, I need so many acres, I need so much water flow, bada, bada, bada. Okay, great, okay, and then they, you know, the economic development nerds, right, with their computer, no, I'm just kidding. Right, they type in, okay, bada, bada, right, you know, here's the sites that come up, right? Well, here's two in Etna and one in Grove City and, okay, and then there's one in Ovats and, um, you know, are there shovel-ready sites in Delaware that come up on a, you know what I mean? Like that's, that shovel-ready is important because if, if it costs, if it's gonna delay me a year, I like this site better, right? I like the location better, I like the schools, I like everything better, but it's gonna take me a year longer to get it done. Well, I'll just go to this other site because it's ready to rock and roll. I mean, I mean, those are the, those are some of the things that come into, come into play when they're considering whether to locate um new commercial development.
Are there questions or comments? Kyle, you're off the quiet. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Take out Sean now for a while, don't go farther, guys.
Thank you, and I do wanna just say, David Stage does, uh, probably his apologies for not being able to be here tonight, he had a family issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I prepared a, a ninety-page PowerPoint presentation, but Tom said I wasn't allowed to use it, just kidding. Yeah, no kidding, right? No, I um, you know, I'm obviously, I'm not gonna go through our, our whole economic development plan. How many of you knew we had an economic development plan at the beginning? And a couple, a couple of hands.
I've just been a while.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while, right? Um, you know, our plan was released in two thousand fourteen. Um, this is the year uh that we would be refreshing that um to be in unison, um joint work with our comprehensive plan work, right? Um, as, as Tom mentioned, probably to you all, with the work that Randall Gross will be doing as part of the comprehensive plan, it really gives us fresh eyes and um data to really dive back into our economic development plan. Um, the plan that we did in two thousand fourteen is very data-driven. Um, it really took a deep dive into um a lot of things uh about the city, particularly the labor force, um, which for any particular community can be one of two things. And I think you just said it, Mayor, that, you know, with a three per, three point three, three point four percent of employment rate depending on which month you look at, that can be seen as a huge negative by a company or a developer. Or it can be seen as huge positive if you spend your numbers appropriately and correctly. And that's where you're, really where your marketing, your reputation comes in, who you are as a community. For us, it's not so much is about marketing um the employees we, we don't have or the employees that we aren't as a community, but who we do have as employees. And that becomes a strength and an opportunity for us if you look at it from a SWOT analysis perspective, right? And this is a very, i- if you look through the plan, it's a very SWOT analysis-heavy plan. But, you know, labor force is a strength and an opportunity for us to, to leverage because of the number that these gentlemen were talking about earlier, eighty percent of our labor force leaving. Um, those are, that's eighty percent of, well, I mean, if you look at it this way, there's twenty thousand, so sixteen thousand employees that we can put in somebody's storefront every morning. And, but that really took us um on a new approach towards economic development background. Cause when I came here, uh, you know, we were very, very heavy industrial. Um, and when I say industrial, I'm talking smoke sma- smokestack industrial. I think the, uh, well, actually, I competed against you all before I left my old job. And it was a warehouse distribution center. And if you remember Ace Hardware, I kicked your butt. It was my last project with that county, but you know why I kicked your butt? Is I kicked your butt on two things, I kicked your butt on labor force, on land pricing and, and pad-ready site. I mean, I had all utilities to it, it was, we spent a lot of time, money developing the industrial park together as a developer, community combination. But we had labor force for, for thirteen dollar an hour jobs. You don't have labor force for thirteen dollar an hour jobs. Um, last time I talked to a distribution facility here, they just kind of looked at us and looked at our labor force data and they're, oh, what's this? And you're not in the game. Um, so, you know, even, even we've talked to developers, we had a developer who specializes in warehouse distribution. Take a look at Delaware a couple of years back, a good friend of mine, actually, I worked with in my last community, and he, he looked at our labor force data and he's like, I can't work here. He's like, you know, I'd love to, um, you're in a great location for distribution. Aside from the transportation issues that we face, you just don't, simply don't have the labor force for it. And you don't have some of the solutions in terms of public transportation to get labor force to them if, if you're trying to pull those from elsewhere. We are, you know, it's another opportunity and, and strength if we had the proper um public transportation is we are in one of the la- largest labor sheds in Ohio. And when I say labor shed, that's where we're pulling workforce from now. The, the, the thirty-six hundred workers that we have in our forty-three court industry employers out in Pittsburgh and Kroger DC and whatnot. Um, those are all coming from elsewhere. And um, but that causes all sorts of issues for us in terms of retention, turnover, um poaching of employees. Um, it's actually caused situations now where um it's created an arms race with, with wages, which is, I guess, great for us in terms of being a city because we rely on income tax, right? But it's really bad for the employers because all of a sudden, um, somebody they were hiring for thirteen dollars an hour a year ago, they're now having to pay seventeen for. So, you know, the, going back to the plan here, this was an opportunity for us to really look at who we are and develop that. Take a look at the perception of, of the city and, and come up with, who do we wanna be next? And how do we best serve our residents, our resident labor force? And it developed some, some uh strategies and objectives and goals to do those things, to, to try to meet that need. And, and some metrics that we really needed to pay attention to, to make sure that we're doing that. Uh, you know, we, we always hear jobs creation, jobs creation. We're, we're municipalities, so for us, it's really about payroll creation. Um, so the, the greatest thing we can do is, is generate payroll, right? And if you look our annual report this, for this past year, um, that's a pretty darn good um wage generation. It's what, you know, eleven point eight million dollars of new uh wages for the city um out of two hundred and twenty-nine jobs. So you do the calculation there, these are, these are much better than LMI jobs. And we're finally, I think, turning the, the corner perceptually from the development community and from employers to say Delaware is this entity now. Because we've been seen so long as being something else. Um, and I think that that will continue to build off of itself um as people continue to work here and have success here. Steve's completely right, this is a, a reputation and uh based business. Um, if, if somebody has a win here, they tell everybody. And um, they talk about their experience here, and there's some developers here back in the audience who've done business here, um, people we've worked with in the past. You know, we, we do take on a very, we laugh about it a lot, the word concierge on our business cards, but we do take, take on a very concierge-based approach. Uh, Jim asked a very thoughtful question by email in terms of, you know, how do we get involved in the planning process? We walk businesses all the way through the planning process until they get to you. Cause we wanna make sure that there aren't any snafus. And if there are, what can we do to address those and, and smooth that over and make it a win-win situation? As Steve said up there, make it a win-win situation for both us and for them. Um, and that's again, a reputation that we are continuing to earn and will continue to spread out there. Um, and will continue to get us more wins. This is a very tactically-based plan as well as strategic plans. So there's, you get into the back and it's, you know, just lots of to-dos, it's a to-do list. We're probably, you know, halfway through that, quite honestly. Um, a lot of it had to do with getting ready to, to be prepared for pad-ready land. Um, knowing that Sawmill was on the, on, on the forefront. Um, and I even told Tom, as a fresh new employee here, I, you know, Sawmill actually concerns me because I think when Sawmill opens up, everybody's gonna think it's the magic key. That it's, it's everything, you know, the, the angels are gonna come out and start singing. It doesn't work that way, and I think we've all found that out, right? Um, that there has to be more investment made in order to truly take advantage of that really awesome piece of infrastructure. Please don't think I'm making light of that. It was a huge thing for us, it was a huge thing for the county, provided a lot of north-south infrastructure. I know there's people behind me that take it to and from work every day. I see Todd Iron back there saying, yes, I do. Um, you know, so it was an important piece of infrastructure, but it didn't end there. And um, you know, Jim Russell's from Pazooji's gonna come up here and talk in a moment um about, you know, what really truly constitutes a pad-ready site and how can communities partner with developers to truly make that happen? And that's what we have to do. Um, I've been talking to Tom in our public services group um here a lot lately. We did our corridor study, if you will, it's that giant binder back there, you've seen it before. Um, that is our corridor study for Sawmill Parkway. That has everything in it infrastructurally that we have to do to make that, that corridor viable. But we also have to have willing landowners and we have to have developer partners in order to get it done. Um, and that's what we're working towards right now. Unfortunately, some landowners are not going to be willing partners and we have to accept that too. Eventually, they might be, we might turn them over. But uh, even if they have it for sale, they still might not be willing partners because they don't understand the realities of industrial land pricing and development. So they think that, you know, I can price land at pad-ready prices um when it isn't truly pad-ready. Um, and I'm not gonna name any specifically, so, um, because we're on camera right now. But um, you know, I, I think that what happens, I told Tom this, I, I think what happens is when others, you know, we, we did get the green light to start marketing fifty acres of Jex property. Um, they love our idea of the specialty aftermarket park. However, they're just not willing to be the developer themselves. And I get that because they're, they're a company that sells motor parts and racing parts and they race. You know, they're not developers. So again, it's a situation now where at least we have a willing landowner who's probably not gonna be insane on land pricing. Um, and that's actually the most land, pad-ready land that we have too, because the water and sewer's already really there. Um, now we have Jex Boulevard to go through, but um, you know, that, that's an opportunity for us to find that developer, that third piece there of the wheel to, to come in and finish that off. Let's, let's do it together, let's make those last line extensions, let's put the road in and let's market this in a very concerted effort. And, and, you know, again, that, to have their green light on that was huge progress and we're very excited about that. So excited, I, I feel better about already kind of marketing it as such before they even said so. And there's actually a passer around here that we've been marketing a, a magazine called PRI, which is a magazine of the Special Equipment Manufacturers Association. So those are the guys that represent trade show, or trade association for the people who make the stuff that is sold through Jex. Um, so, and we're already generating leads on that front, that's already happening. Um, it's just, you know, you talk about frustration. It's just, you know, you talk about frustration there. The frustration happens when I get leads and I know certain people don't like to hear the word lead, but leads is a product, product of your marketing. It's a, it's a, it's when you market properly, you get people coming in here. And this isn't the same as sales leads in other industries where I'm picking up a roller decks and just making cold calls. Those are people who have sincere interest in us because of things that we're doing. But you have to turn away eighty percent of them because you don't have anything that's going to work for them. You know, and that's really unfortunate. And that's where we are right now, quite honestly. So, when you look at your lead conversion, and I think we do really well on those leads that are directly generated by us on lead conversion, and then product, project conversion, the win conversion, but we could be doing better. We can always be doing better at that by having appropriate product.
How important do you think your job retention is that you do?
It's, it's drastically important. I mean, if you look at it this way, the, the statistic that you hear countrywide, nationally, that sixty-five percent of your jobs are created by existing employers, that's wholly true here. You know, it ebbs and flows, but you have people in this room right now who've invested back in the community and whatnot, or we kept here and helped them grow in our community and getting ready to do it again, hopefully with your help. But if we're not serving our local companies, we don't grow, especially the ones that are employing our labor force, the, the eighty percent that are going elsewhere. And that's one of the reasons, leads me to the next topic there, the E-DIP is so important. E-DIP is a tool of the Economic Development Plan that allows us to make good decisions about incentives. It establishes processes and procedures for developing incentive packages that make sense for our community and, and puts the faith from you to us, the staff and city manager, to be doing that appropriately and, and quickly so that we can speed up negotiations and, and do it in a more timely format. And then when we get back to you, we have a package that you know it was done right because it was following the E-DIP. It was, it was for a company we believe in, for the employees that we have, and, and you can pass it. So, yeah, but yeah, going back to your question, you know, business retention expansion, if at least sixty-five, seventy percent of the jobs that we're creating here are coming from existing companies.
Okay. Thank you.
Just real quickly, in terms of infrastructure, Steve mentioned it, Sean's mentioned it, we've talked about it before, the JEGGS Boulevard extension, the estimated cost to bring JEGGS Boulevard from forty-two all the way to Sawmill Parkway is four million dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's, it's four million dollars. Now that would, now is that going to guarantee that sites you can open? It's going to, it's going to help facilitate being able to market that property more successfully than we are now because you've got that infrastructure in place, you've got a plan in place. But this is the challenge that we bump up against, is just that, the cost of infrastructure. And that's where these more, these public-private partnerships, where you are able to team up with a developer, a willing landowner in the community over identifying what that vision is for that land. And I think Sean has talked about that, and I've shared it with you in terms of that, property on forty-two, the JEGGS zones. That's what we, that's going to be required, absolutely required because of the, just that steep cost of the infrastructure. When we built Pittsburgh Drive back in the nineteen-sixties and PPG came in, it was the, you know, the comparison, it was just nowhere near what it was today in terms of cost for less, and it was a two-lane road, there was ditch drainage, it was a lot different than it's got today. Fifty years later, fifty-five, three years later, you have an industrial park that is almost fully built out. So we've got to look at, obviously, take the long view, want to try to get things going as quickly as we can, but we've really got to, we've got to address that money. How do we raise the dollars or partner with the private sector to put those things in place that will develop? The reason EMS Systems was able to do what they're doing and John Lewis has been able to do what he's doing is we invested that, that not just the extension of Sawmill Parkway, but the Innovation Court. And that was an example of the city putting the infrastructure dollars in place through a combination of things, working with the private sector. And now we're seeing, I think that's yielding, that's yielding some really positive results. But again, you know, that order of magnitude to go all the way, and that's a long distance. If you go on Sawmill Parkway and you look for that curb cut is for JEGGS, it's, it's considerable. If you could just get it to Slack Road, that's the other option, is you could get it to Slack Road and you still open up quite a bit. But anyway, that's just adding to the point of infrastructure.
At least we do a little more management book there because a lot of sewers are already there.
You've got it. Yeah, it's ready to go.
Yeah. People go down to, one of my last communities, West Jefferson, they're like, how, how did you put an industrial park out in the middle of these cornfields when they're six miles away from the local village? And it's a village that has no budget. It's the public-private partnerships. There's no way we could have gotten that done without private money, state money, federal money, and our money as a community combined to pay for the infrastructure. I mean, we built a twenty-five million dollar interchange and the village really didn't have, the village had one point two million dollars in it. So, I mean, you know, there are possibilities out there, we just have to structure it appropriately. And we do have a proposal coming in here shortly to, for some help to help us establish those, those models for us, specific to our needs here in Delaware.
Since we have this money coming in for the point, which I know isn't going to happen for a while, what's our chances of getting any other help from the state or federal Morpsy? I mean, is it, because that one's still in the works?
Yeah, I, you know, that's a great question. I don't think it really hurts us as, as long as we establish ourselves as a, as a prioritized job creation area. Economic development has more points involved than it ever has in those decision-making projects for, for Tiger and Track. Five years ago, they weren't even part of the conversation, quite honestly. But I think one of the important things for us to make sure we're establishing right now though, is that we're part of the regional strategy and regional prioritization. And if you've seen what they've done with Morpsy and whatnot in terms of prioritizing all of the road projects in the region and the state, actually, entire states prioritize now for how those funds will get allocated, we have to make sure that we're on this. And the only one that we actually, we as a city have on there right now is the point. The county has the thirty-six, thirty-seven interchange rate, seventy-one. But, you know, if we want to be included for those types of funds, we have to start that work now, lots of law.
Well, I don't know where else we could.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, if, if we were to land or be in process of landing a project, you know, we could tap into six-twenty-nine monies and jobs and commerce monies, which also, when Tom was talking about Innovation Court, you know, that was a public-private partnership. We just didn't have a formal process for it, but we built it anyhow. You know, it was partly money from Sawmill Dollar Investments, partly money from us and partly money from the state, two different state entities that helped pay for that road. And, and look how that happened. I mean, now, we did have a, a bird in the hand, if you will. We had a project, and that's where, again, those retention projects can be just as used as, just as well as anything else. But, and you can argue that this company over here needs to use this piece of road over here sometimes. So you just have to draw that connection.
Is there anything in the E-DIP that we don't already do? Again, is there? Yeah. And what you already sent to us is already in the E-DIP?
Yeah, I mean, the incentives that are in the E-DIP are ones that we have already established. In fact, I, I went and polished up the last one there because we, we kind of redid it. It was the, the economic-based performance incentive. I rewrote that section as I get out to you. But it's to take your, your currently used incentives and create those processes of procedures and metrics for those and formulas, if you will. So those are already in there. We've theoretically been using those process procedures and formulas for the last, at least since two thousand fourteen. We've just never formally established that as our process for doing these things. And, yeah.
I see, I get a range of normal in what we've seen in that really if we put the E-DIP into play, then there's really, it's really just business as usual. We don't get to see things as much, which might be good.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, it would, you wouldn't have this long involved process of a negotiation team that we have. A lot of stuff would happen behind the scenes that you're not normally seeing now, or, you know, we're pulling together a team, ten people to talk with the company. Now, if, if it follows these, if it follows these objectives and these metrics and gets to this formula, we can do this, you know? And the school would be good with that, we'd be good with that, and then offer to, in front of you as a, as a, as a package. Yeah, so, I mean, there's a little more work that we can do there by accepting it than, than what we're doing right now, absolutely. And it should be a living, breathing document too. In fact, I told Tom, I've actually seen communities adopt it by resolution instead of ordinance, so that, you know, if it does need to be updated, we just come back in front of you and say, hey, we have a new idea for an incentive, or maybe this isn't working right. We need to change that up. We can come back to you and say, hey, you know, here's our recommendation for this. Let's, let's adopt that again as, in terms of resolutions.
A balance, so eighty percent of our city leaves. Is there a ratio that I think would be good or is it nationally recognized? Is it fifty-fifty or is there, is there a number that exists?
I've often read, and maybe Bob and Steve can chime in too, I've often read it should be like sixty-forty, you know, sixty.
Sixty stay, forty leave.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're just a little out of balance, well, not a little, actually, we're out of balance by a lot. I, I thought it was bad, my last community where sixty percent of my workforce left and forty percent stayed, this is way off that even, right? So, yeah. And quite honestly, in terms of, when you talk about metrics and how you should be judging your performance, I would behoove us to look at payroll, income taxes, and that, changing that inflow-outflow of employees. If we don't make progress in that, we don't have sustainability. Just think about, think of it this way, we give half a percent credit to somebody who works in Columbus right now, right? So if that sixteen, if those sixteen thousand employees were working in Columbus, I mean, that's just hypothetical, and you took, gave that, took that half percent or the fifty percent credit back and that was coming back into our coffers, that's a lot of money. And that's just a, that's a win. And it also takes stress off of our infrastructure. You're not seeing congestion heading south and then to the point, two, two times a day. You know, it has all kinds of just sustainable functions to, to trying to balance that, that inflow-outflow with the matriculation.
I was by the Bedu community for far too long, we just need to change it.
Yeah. And we're getting a reputation now. I mean, I think a couple of things have happened the last couple of years, people are starting to look at Delaware in a whole new light. We just have to keep working. We can never give up, never, never, isn't that the Winston Churchill saying, never, never, never give up? So, yeah.
Other comments by council for Sean? Questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for your support.
Sure.
Sean, do you want to introduce?
Yes.
Speaker, in fact, I think you've worked with him.
Absolutely. I would like to introduce to you Mr. Jim Russell. He's a senior vice president with the Pazuti Companies. Jim has been a, a good friend and mentor to me for eons. Yeah, I know, right? You've seen with me. I've never had the chance to actually work on a project with you, can you believe that? I, I think we need to change that, that's why you're always here.
Right.
Yeah. But, yeah, Jim, Jim has been instrumental in projects all over the country. But, you know, one of the, one of the communities that you see benefit a lot from Jim's work is actually Grove City. They've done some just fantastic, amazing work in Grove City. And talk about a, a community that had to change its perception. I mean, I don't know if you all had nicknames for Grove City when you were a kid, but I sure did. And, and, you know, look at Grove City today. I mean, it seems a couple of things, a huge logistics hub, you know, the only thing they don't have that Rick and Barker has, that Rick and Barker has that they don't have is air and rail, I guess. But, but they're also seen as a place to do office now, Grove City. But, you know, a lot of Jim's work was, was critical and partnering again with the community to make that possible.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome, Jim.
Well, thank you for having me. I know it's towards the end of the evening, everybody's probably as tired as I am, it's been a long day for everybody, but hopefully I can provide some value to you. One of the things that I enjoy most, not only in my job, but in my career, is talking about economic development. So just to kind of set the stage of what exactly I do and who I do it for and kind of broaden the discussion a little bit for you. And so I do work for the Pazuti Companies. We've been an at-risk developer for forty-one years, and I always describe it as at-risk because I put Ron and Joel's money at risk every single day and they remind us of that every single day. But the whole idea is how do you provide investors, whether they be internal investors to your company or other outside equity investors who are a part of your process, how do you get them an adequate return and minimize their risk? At the end of the day, that's what development is all about, maximize profit, minimize risk, real estate development one oh one. So I've been doing that now for twenty-one years, so I've been at Pazuti more than half or about half of their existence. Prior to that, I was a former city manager and economic development professional. So I went from the public sector, spending almost a decade doing what Sean does, doing what Tom does, and staying away from what all you do. I had a council and elected officials, I let you do your policy work and, and I tried to drive that. But it did give me a great background in understanding how things get done. I worked in a community that had, when I was hired, had no new housing starts for thirteen years prior and still had areas without water and sewer. I mean, it was a, it was a big challenge, so I got to cut my teeth doing a lot of different and exciting things. Most of that work was spent doing economic development, even though as a city manager, because we had no money. And at the end of the day, that's what we needed to drive. So I focused a lot of my efforts on understanding development, learning what I could and understanding the tools that I had or the tools I could create. And Steve will appreciate this as an attorney, that I find gray areas of the law to be the most colorful and that's the way that you get deals done, quite frankly. So I, I do a lot of work in economic development, still do a lot of teaching for economic development. I teach, I'm an instructor for the International Economic Development Council, teaching real estate development and reuse for economic development practitioners. So part of the certification process, it's a required course that they have to take. I'm also in the faculty of Ohio State, teaching real estate development and finance to city planning students, graduate students, which is long overdue because pretty plans that you've probably paid for that don't work, you know, there's a reason for that. And how do we help marry the realities of the market with great vision? And I learned that by spending too much money, public dollars on plans that look like Disney World, not the community that I was the city manager in. So all of that experience I kind of bring to the table, but really, this was a discussion about real estate development and, and more or less the private perspective of things that motivate us and how we make some of our decisions. So it kind of keeps us somewhat concise. I've been drinking coffee since five this morning, so if I'm a little hyped up, sorry about that. But anyway, if you think through part of the process, there's a reason, methodology, methodology on how developers pick their projects. It's typically because we have to fill a pipeline, we have people that we have to pay, we have money that we have to pay back investors, and we have to have an active pipeline of projects. That's the reality of how we do business and because of the cycle, and Bob talked a little bit about the, the cycle of real estate development and the time that it can take to take a project from concept to completion, you really need to stay on top of where your next project is coming from. So filling a pipeline is a big part of that. Part of it is also filling a need for your client. So we have a lot of regular clients, Whirlpool is one of our largest clients, we've done probably eighteen manufacturing facilities for them, we redid their corporate headquarters, their world headquarters in Benton Harbor. But over the years, we know what they need, they talk to us when they need something. And so a lot of the times, the, the projects that we go after are because we have a client in hand that's one of our regular clients who are just looking for a real estate solution that we can help fulfill. And then the other part of our work is really about taking advantage of more of the creative approach of what projects we think help build our brand, it could be us getting into a different business unit, but there's really something else that, that makes us pursue projects. So, you know, thinking there's a reason why projects pop up and, and how they pop up. When we are trying to cite those projects and we're looking for community partners, and a lot of this has been talked about with Steve and Bob and Sean, but really, it's about three critical areas that we look at very quickly. And we, I say very quickly because this is at very quickly. And we, I say very quickly because this is a very competitive environment. So you understand and you feel the competitiveness of where you sit within the region, but you're competing on a statewide basis. You're competing against other states, and you're competing against other areas of the country, and you're competing against other countries. And you have to understand that. I see on average 15 to 20 deals per week coming through our office of folks asking us to pursue a deal, communities asking us to pursue communities. We don't get as many clients every 20 a week saying, we want you to build our building, but they're asking for our services. So somewhere in that mix, we see a lot of projects, interest, ideas, land, you name it, we see that. And we have to source through that and say, well, how do we find a way to move through that? And at the end of the day, time is money. Money is money. And so we have to go through a kind of a quick evaluation. And we, we do that in looking at communities in three areas. One, we do look at the political support. It is huge. And understanding, do you have a community that welcomes development? Are they going to be a partner in development? Do they want development to occur? And what kind of development do they want to occur? Without having a good handle on what your desires are, it can be a challenge. It can be a conflict, an unknowing conflict, because you may think, hey, we're trying to be helpful, but if we're not speaking the same language, or we're pursuing a project that doesn't fit your needs or goals, somewhere we'll have a conflict, and neither of us will understand why. So we really look at what, what communities have the political support and desire to participate in the program. Some of that gets back even to looking at your regulatory process, and your zoning requirements, and your density, and how you view those kind of things, because they all kind of factor into how we make decisions. The second is the market feasibility. We do, it, it is all based on market. And we can, we can help influence a market. You can help influence a market. You can help grow a market, but you don't, it, it's very difficult for the public sector or the private sector alone to create a market. And so projects that do not fit, currently fit within your market, are always going to be more of a challenge than other projects, or in relationship to other communities. So we have to evaluate that. We have to look at what the rents are in your community. We have to look at what your vacancy rates are in your community. We have to look at the cap rates that are going on in your community, because the exit strategy to real estate is very important to us. So we have to see how things trade in your community, and what kind of return we're going to be able to get out of our buildings, because it's really about the productivity of the project. We sell net operating income. We don't just sell the real estate. And you want us to sell the higher level of that net operating income, because it raises your property values much more than me just selling a project for the cost that I built, that I paid to build it. So we have to look and understand the market feasibility behind a project. And then all those, those first two items kind of lead into the financial feasibility. It has to work financially for us. If we can't get an adequate return to the dollars that either we're investing, or our equity partners are investing, then we're going to make a decision to go somewhere else. And sometimes we make that decision without ever talking to anybody in your community. We can do a very quick estimate on, on a piece of property, and say, I can build 150,000 square foot building here. I know what your rents are in the community. I know what your vacancy rates are. I can put, do a little simple math, figure out, here's the revenue I'm going to come up with. I know what it'll kind of run, cost me to run that business, so I can get my NOI right away. I can then look at the cost and estimate it based on our experience on what it should cost to build, a building, what it will cost to run that $4 million road to it. And I'll do that math of expenses, do a simple mathematics. I know what my return will be. I divide it by the cap rate. I can see what I'll be able to flip that building for. If it doesn't make more, is greater than my cost, I'm going to move on, without ever talking to anybody in the community. So the financial feasibility becomes a key component. Now, the good thing, most developers are cowboys. We're like economic development folks, because we don't necessarily run away from something that we may see a gap. We, we live in the gaps. The deals happen in the gap. So when we see, and we do that kind of quick financial analysis, and I see that, hey, I can't get an adequate return, I'll call Sean, or I'll call Bob, and I'll say, hey, I need some help closing a gap. And that's where you should be putting your incentives, where you should be putting your help in is closing a gap. If I come in and say, tell me everything you'll give me before I share with you what I need, that's a problem. That's a, that's a policy problem for you. It's a problem for the public, saying, well, why are you even doing this? But more importantly, how do you know that the money is going to close a gap to get a deal done? And so we're very open with the, with the communities that we work in. And I'll say, look, I need to figure out, I need to find $3 million. I need to find it. And we can find it. There's only two ways to fix a real estate deal, right? I can increase revenue that I keep bumping up to the market, if there's only so much rent I can afford, or I need to lower my cost. And, and try and find a way to work together to, to either increase my revenue or lower my cost. That's how deals happen. And, and revenue, there are issues. And, and I tell a lot of communities, I ask them, well, when was the last time you did a review of your zoning, and you did an update to your comprehensive plan, and you tied both of those to the market? Because a lot of times, zoning has been in place for a very long time. It is part of the growth of communities. But we've worked in communities where density issues, something written in a zoning, would allow us, I'll use an example. We have a piece, we own a piece of property in a, in one of the Ring communities, that we've been working with the city on for many years to change their zoning to allow luxury multifamilies to be included in this more of a commercial office corridor. And they've resisted till they realize you can't force an office owner to go into a market that doesn't really exist for office. You can just, you can chase that dream for a lot of, a lot of years. So they finally agreed, and they put forth a zoning change that was very specific in the density requirements, or what they were going to allow us. And that was, we could go four to eight stories, and with the density on our site, we could get 187 units. Now, in a luxury multifamily project, the most efficient number of, from just purely from an operating standpoint, if we're doing a standalone project, is 200 units. If we can build 200 units, our costs go down per unit from an operating standpoint, and it's a little easier to solve. From a community perspective, 187 to 200, those 13 units between a four and eight story, does it really, really matter to you? But sometimes your zoning is set up in a way that we have to either go through a zoning, you know, rework a variance or something that may add 30, 40, six months to a deal. All of a sudden, to gather that little bit of additional revenue, I'm going to leave. It doesn't make sense for us to necessarily fight that, unless it's land that we already own. So that is what we kind of, we, we include that all in the financial analysis, to say, how can we work together and, and figure out ways either to increase revenue? And sometimes it is, hey, if we can get a little bit greater density, you know, or a little bit greater coverage on a site to minimize those landowners who want to maximize their return. That's how we close gaps. And that's part of really working with communities who understand that's what it should be about, as long as it meets the objective. It's your community, so you set the objectives that you want. But then, as Steve had mentioned, being reasonable in your request, being consistent in your request and expectations of the developers, and being clear in your process makes our job a little bit easier to figure that out. Doesn't mean we always come. It just means it makes it easier for us to make decisions on whether your community, you know, meets muster, passes muster or not. So that's kind of my real estate kind of snapshot on, on how we look at things, and how they influence. And I'm happy to talk about anything else that you may possibly want, for as long as you may want to talk about.
Jim, do you use the finance authorities a lot when you do jobs?
So depending on the gap we're trying to close. So we've used the Franklin County Finance Authority on a couple occasions. We did on a project. We, we've done on a few. Our, our development in the short north, the Joseph, which is the Limerity Inn Hotel, the boutique hotel, the office building, the parking garage, and the art collection. They, we participate a little with them on the parking garage to get some sales tax savings on the parking garage. They are very active. We did a huge project with them at Rick and Becker, related to the, we did a million square foot facility for Whirlpool, and they were part of that process. But we've passed on opportunities with them, because depending on the finance authority and the cost of their money versus the cost of our money, sometimes we can get the same benefit. If we don't need the tax savings on one of the more public, like the parking garage is a public parking garage that served a project of ours as well. So this all depends on the cost of money, and see if it makes sense for us. So we have, and then they have different reserve requirements, especially Franklin County did when they started up and started getting into the, the bonding and the lending. There's some of their reserve requirements on, like a parking garage, were greater than what we would have to carry with our own lender. So they're evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but always to help close that gap. So that, sales tax dollars, it, it doesn't go back into our pocket. It goes into that underwriting to get those numbers to work. So if we don't have to pay $700,000 in sales tax on a, on a large-scale construction project, we don't put it back in our pocket. It'd be nice. I used to think that, because when I was a city manager, you do a closing and checks went all over the table, and none of them stopped in front of the city. It's like, that's kind of weird. Well, it's the same thing. When you give tax abatement, because that's a pass through to us, tax abatement doesn't go to us. It goes to the operating expense to the tenant that's in the building. So it does actually go back to, to them. And some of those exemptions, if we have a gap, if our project's fully funded and our underwriting works, and I'm just asking for more money, then it may. But typically, that's not, you know, that's not how we would approach it, because not many people knock on the government's door and say, hi, I have a project that works every day, and I'd like more help from the government, because they don't really think they're going to get it. So it's a matter, it's usually the deals that have some kind of challenge to it that bring us to the table.
Forget the authority. Now, have you ever had any trouble with the finance?
With these guys?
With the finance authority itself? Have you personally, when you've done your deals, have you ever had any trouble with them at all?
No. No, they're, again, it's, it's a cost, because there's a fee. I mean, part of their ability to stay in business, which is very important, you know, there's an appropriate level fee. So no, we've never, never said, all right, we do not want to work with a port authority or a finance authority, because they are, they are a partner. I mean, we see them as a partner, and for the right projects. So.
Questions? Comments?
What's your perspective on the Sawmill Parkway corridor, and its potential, obviously, taking the long view, in terms of getting it ready, what's the role, in your opinion, of companies like Pizzuti that do this kind of thing?
Yeah. And, and I think a lot of it, Tom, is tied to the market and what you're trying to attract. I mean, part of the challenge that you've had here is, quite frankly, if you look at central Ohio and, and the logistic and distribution facility, it really doesn't fit. You really don't meet all of those boxes to check, because you are off of the interstate, you are further away. So I think finding a niche that is more dedicated to owner-operated type facilities, I think what you're playing for with the Jakes Park and that aftermarket, I think is a wonderful idea. And I think the way that you need to focus your marketing efforts on those kind of users are exactly what will come here. I think the Sawmill extension is, is a critical part of that investment. I think the connecting road and that $4 million price tag is going to be important. And I'll, I'll give you an example. So if you just do the math of that $4 million cost on a 50-acre parcel to open it up, that's like $80,000 an acre. If I'm building 100,000 square foot facility, it's like a dollar and a quarter a square foot in rent, if I'm the only one kind of going to some of those properties. And so to get a share in that cost for the ability to at least get that number lowered, we'll lose a deal today on 25 cents a square foot in cost. So anything that you're adding, I mean, even, and that's back to the price of land, which is really the biggest challenge. It, it's happening everywhere. It's not just here. That landowners, rightfully so, I mean, that's their retirement, that's their return, that's their family. But their role in a development project is huge. And then there are some communities who understand that, and they will, they will acquire the property, and they'll do land write downs as part of the incentive. So instead of saying, we'll give you tax abatement, say, we'll give you the land, because sometimes that land formula is worse for us to carry, more difficult for us to put into a project than, than paying taxes on, on the property. So it's a matter of looking at the investments, and the more public investment that you can make, the lower the cost is to the end user, and that makes you competitive, especially in, in, especially in central Ohio, where land costs are just going up in construction costs. That's the other thing. You, we're all suffering from construction costs right now. They're throwing things out of whack, not only the cost of materials, but also the cost of labor to, to be able to install and build those projects. And all it's doing is adding to the gap. It's, it's just adding to the gap. Costs are crazy. So.
How do you see the airport in that 42 Sawmill development?
Um, in terms of their impact to the desirability, the marketability of it.
I mean, we're not going to be a Rick and Becker.
Right. Yeah. And I think, again, if you're marketing in your corridor for more of that owner-operated type facility, where you may have those folks who either have wealthier businesses that are trying to manufacture, I think that's more of the, the use that'll be attracted to a user who may want to check on his facilities more than really used as part of the commerce side. Now, I don't know the market is deep, and I think that is part of what you need to find out. We, we did a project, and I know Sean probably heard the case study, where we created what was called Optical Village. And some of you may have heard that term. It was a, a marketing, I won't say a marketing scam, is this recorded? A marketing approach that basically, we looked at the Rick and Becker and Ovets corridor, and we, we looked at eyewear industry, and we looked at it very deeply, and saw that what was going on. Two things were happening. This is probably 15, 18 years ago, with eyewear. I mean, you are now, you used to go to your eye doctor, and, you know, two or three weeks, you'd get your glasses back. Well, then all of a sudden, you started seeing the pearl visions popping up. You can get your glasses in 24 hours, you can get them in an hour. Walmart Optical started saying, you can come to the store and get your glasses in an hour. So we looked at the medical, the eyewear industry, and we saw that what was referred to then as hockey pucks, the lenses were being manufactured in one location. The optometrist would call in a prescription. They would mold it. They would pick it up. They would send it to another, to a frame installer, a frame manufacturer who would install the lens. That package of a lens with a frame would then go to a, to a coatings company who would put either the photo gray or some other image to it. Then it would get packaged and sent back to the optometrist. So that long process, those doctors couldn't compete within the marketplace. And so what we do is we created an approach and branded Optical Village. And we worked with the state of Ohio, and the time city of Columbus, and the village of Ovets, to create a set of incentives that were very specific to the eyewear industry. We were able to attract that, and worked a deal with DHL Distribution that we could do late-night pickup. So everything that was picked up, could be picked up at midnight for next-day delivery. And then we encouraged the lens manufacturer, the frame manufacturer, the coatings company, the packaging, all to come to this part. Some cases, we put them in the same building, and we would just out-pass through. Well, within probably about two years, there was 3,500 employees in the eyewear manufacturing. The largest eyewear manufacturing lab in the United States was built there, employing 400 people, earning $80,000 apiece. VSP, who probably provides vision service for a lot of you in the public sector, has, still has a manufacturing lab down there. That largest lab was Walmart Optical, who they were getting their butts kicked. So they put a lab, trying to beat the other folks, and the Walmart lab closed first. By the way, because the other things worked better. We were able to attract a Essilor International Company to do a, to do a liquid polymer lab there to test polymer lenses, to be able to, it was a fascinating process that they eventually moved to France. There's still eyewear jobs down there. But there's a long run of almost 15 years before other communities said, well, we can put an Optical Village in our park, because quite frankly, you could put it anywhere. It was not anything tied to Columbus, Ohio. It was, how do we look at something, much like you're doing with the aftermarket, here's something that we can do, that we can brand differently, that we can provide incentives to, and just package in a way that folks want to do business, where they can do business, and they can do it quicker, and they can make money faster. So, you know, that kind of approach is, is really, I think, part of the benefit of what you're doing is, you know, I applaud that effort, because quite frankly, it's a, it's the right one for that area right now. So. Are there things for me?
Yeah, go ahead.
How do we differentiate between companies that are looking to fill the gap, and companies that are just looking for the handout?
You ask them to see what are they solving for. Ask them. And Sean did take a class of mine, and I tell folks that if I come to your office and I say, you know, I, I need some help, and you don't ask me, well, what I, can I help you with? Because if you ask that question, I'll say, well, I, I can't, I just need more money. Don't take that. Say, well, are you trying to lower your cost? Are you trying to increase? What are you using to underwrite your process? Sometimes it's even the lender. Lenders can kill deals. I always, even our finance guys, I say, finance guys are deal killers, because they're really demanding on the return. And, and a bank's going to look at a project wherever it's going, and they're going to say, there's two tests we have to make. It's the loan-to-value ratio. So how much are they willing to lend on the real estate? So if it all goes to hell in a handbasket, what can they sell it for? And they're not real estate folks, so they want to fire sale that and get their money back. But they're going to look at the debt service coverage ratio. They're going to say, how much money am I making? Can I afford to pay them back? Well, you know, that's a very subjective number that they're giving us. So all of a sudden, I could bring a lender to your community, he doesn't like it as much as we do, and my underwriting will suck because of nothing that you've done, nothing I've done. So relationships with local bankers who know your market better, who may say, hey, we, we're hey, we're willing to invest in a new business coming in and provide more competitive lending rates where you may not have to do anything more but introduce us to a bank who say, hey, we'll either give you a higher loan to value ratio or more importantly, a lower debt service coverage ratio. So we're expecting less of your money to go back to them. You know, so it's just really understanding tools, but ask, what are you trying to do? And ask them what kind of return are you trying to get and see what they say. Because typically on a real estate deal, if we can get an 8% return on cost, that's a reasonable approach to us. And, and don't ever ask the developer to just take out their development fee in a project in a pro forma because that's different than the return. And, and the reason why we have a fee built in all of our projects is because it's to fund all the projects that don't go forward. I mean, we have to pay the light bill, we have to pay people. And, and I will tell you, Bob had mentioned, you know, 150 or 200,000 dollars. We have a project right now, we're doing a multifamily, a high-rise apartment building in downtown Chicago. We've been working on it for five and a half years. We have $6 million tied up with that and have it earned one penny on that $6 million. So that clock is even worse and it gets deeper and deeper the hole if you can't advance the project soon enough. So, you know, getting, having some kind of fee, that's just the real estate business. But I'd ask them what their return is and see if they say, well, I'm not telling you. Well, then all you have to say is, I can't help you if I don't know how to help you. And you can still, that is up to you and how you want to deal with it. But I wouldn't be afraid to ask them. Those are reasonable questions to ask.
Jim, can you be brutally honest? I mean, have you heard one way or the other, if Delaware does things right or if there's places that we should be improving at?
You know, I have two ex-wives, both of which ask me if I look fat in these jeans. And they're two ex-wives, so I don't know how I should answer that question or not. There's not. For the most part, we think very highly of, of your city and of the county. And it's really understanding how, what is the right market for you. And we have done, we did a distribution facility and packaging facility for Exel in the county down in the southern part. We built the original building and they left to go to Albany and we built that building. It's not because we didn't want them to stay in the building that we built here. It's a matter of the president lived in Albany and they wanted to be closer to their business. But understanding how it fits because it's a big county and the perception is very different. Delaware, I think people love Delaware, trying to figure out how they can do business in Delaware. And I'll talk about the users, not us. Is part of where you need to connect and how do you keep that leakage of folks going out? And it's very hard. Think of your own lives. I mean, how many of you really think that in your job, every, your individual jobs, if they moved, would you move? Is where, do you go where your job is? And it's not like millennials, like my kids, they're like, we're going to live in Chicago. Do you have a job? No. They don't care. But, but we do. And the people have more wealth and more spending. We're still a little bit more stable. So I think finding ways to mirror and try to align skill sets of the community, the folks who are leaving and say, well, where are they going? What are the types of jobs that they are taking and where are they driving to? Say, do you have a niche? Can you fill that here? And start looking at those types of firms. It may not be those firms, but those types of firms to say, hey, we have this exodus of people going. We have a workforce. It's a hidden workforce for your type business because right now those folks are leaving. And it's really about how you may package that. Most of that spending though impacts the county more than you because that leakage is more on sales tax. It's not on income. You want their income tax, but you also want to be able to help the multiplier of those folks spending it here because then you do get those income dollars too. But it is hard. It is hard to mirror those two items. That's, that's the best I can give you.
Thank you.
And you all look good in your jeans. Other questions for me? Many years ago, I used to take karate lessons in downtown Delaware and I drove all the way up here from Westerville to take them. We really do like to meet. I've been around this community. I have friends who still live in it. My girlfriend went to Ohio Wesleyan. So we're here more personally, but I can't afford to live here yet. Your housing stuff's going, going up, which is something you, honestly, you may think about in some of your corridors because the challenges of matching workforce and you talk about, and Sean had mentioned, distribution wages to some of those jobs. And it's not, it's not a knock on public policy, but think through the, one of the ways that we deal with workforce issues, we talk about, we're going to give bus passes to folks in Linden to get up at six in the morning, to drive a bus for an hour and a half to go work for $13,000 an hour, leaving at 5:30, getting home at seven, hoping their kids did their homework and ate their dinner. You know, finding ways to build affordable housing closer to the workforce, to the, to the jobs, you start minimizing the cost of having to pay for public transportation because people can walk to work or they can carpool to work. And we were successful working with communities to do down payment assistance from businesses to get their own workforce to move closer to their facilities. Because if you, if you look at absenteeism and tardism and employment, especially in tight labor markets, those are huge impacts to a business. And having programs that encourage their own workers to live closer, which helps you keep them here, all of a sudden, that's an incentive that not many other communities are even looking at. And so that may be even more important than some of the other items that are in your toolbox to say, can we do that? And it's hard. It is hard to balance affordable housing because it's land prices, it's school district, there's a lot of things. But figuring out ways to attack some of that instead of just giving bus passes may help you more than you think. So. Well, you can tell it's a lot of coffee today. I'm sorry. Well, thanks for the opportunity. Feel free, if you guys now to get ahold of me, I'm happy to help and answer any other questions. Thanks.
From our developers and EMS, anybody in the back room, do you have any questions that we should have asked that you want answered? Any observations or anything to share? If you do have to turn the microphone off because it is recorded.
Hi, I'm John Lewis. I live 1036 Hills Miller Road. I had a question for Bob. You mentioned the, the sales tax thing, but I heard that the county has to take ownership? How, how does that work? Because I don't see, I don't understand how a bank would react to that. If you financed a project and now you say, I've got, I've got to turn this over to the, to the county for three years or whatever.
Yeah, it's not the county that takes ownership. It's the finance authority that takes ownership of the building. And we've actually not had issues with the bank. Once they sit down and see the legal documents and that there is no real transfer of rights to that building that happened, just an on paper ownership stance. They're very comfortable with that transaction, we found. It's a capital lease arrangement that's entered into. So even though ownership does transfer over, all rights remain with the developer or previous owner of the project. And then it's all spelled out very clearly in legal documents that at the end of that period of time, normally for us, three years, full transfer back to that owner.
Okay. Because Sean's talked to us about this another, number of times over the past couple of years. But most recently, I had heard that and we said, oh gee, forget that. That's never going to work. So we didn't go forward with it. So that, that may be something that you want to cover a little more thoroughly.
Yeah. And when we get that application, we're engaging with different landowners. We go through that pretty in depth. As I said, right now, only four or five or so projects previously, but we have a pipeline of 20. And that is normally the initial concern raised. Once they see the documents, they go through it and we sit down with their attorneys and their financing apparatus, whether a bank or whatever it is, there seems to be very quickly a comfort level reached.
Okay. I may reach out to you.
Yes, happy to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else? That? God, anything? George? Nothing? Okay. All right. How about if we take a five minute break and then we'll come back for discussion? Okay. All right. We did that. Court bill. Run. There's, it's next on the agenda. It's discussion and the next step. So we just, don't walk away. So we just don't walk away. Okay, so discussion. You want to take this, right?
I will take this.
Okay.
Char, or Carolyn and Tom and I have been kind of kicking around for several weeks, how would you make this event productive? I guess I want to start by saying a couple things. Number one, when talking about economic development, we're not seeing an economic bump. We want to do a great job. What we're saying is, economic development is important for a lot of reasons. How can we step up a notch, two or three over the next five to 10 years? And what kind of things do we need to know in order to do that? And to my way of thinking, there's several reasons why it's critical that we use this right now. We all know that we've got a lot of deep financial needs that we really can't fund. And we may be able to provide road tax, levying on a ballot and get that passed, but there's certainly other things. Parking, garage stock, and all those things we want to do. We know we're not going to get more money from the state, so one way that we can increase our revenue is by doing better child economic development, bringing in the right kinds of development, right? Bringing in people, which, you know, a lot of times, our speakers have talked about commercial development. To me, an equally important part of that is our residential development, having diverse, diverse housing stock and especially being able to have affordable housing, because we want to have workers here that, that got a sustainable look. So when we talk about the things, we're going to pass out a list of some discussion topics. Part of that is all those things that we can, should be thinking about in terms of how we make those improvements. But another area that I think is really important, and Steve kind of pointed this out, is we're in competition with all these other states around it. Grove City's done an excellent job. Utten looking County did an excellent job. You know, Marysville's stepping it up. So, you know, how can we be really competitive, more competitive than that in terms of this? And lastly, I think as elected officials, it's kind of up to us to take the lead on developing a vision of where we want to see this go. We know our staff is good. We know they'll do whatever we ask them to do, but I think it's incumbent on us to decide where do we want to see this go? What are our priorities? So, have you got that paper that we drew up? So we've been kind of kicking this around. We may not get to all this stuff tonight, but I just kind of wanted to walk you through our list of, of, and the other thing, I look at this, this is the first time I've seen your economic development plan. You've had a lot of this, I like SWOT analysis type stuff and some, some good stuff in there. And some of this discussion comes from some things that have been brought up at, at the Economic Development World of One Conference, which I highly recommend. I've been to it several years. It's always worthwhile. So the first part of this is just about what kind of things should we be talking about in terms of improving our economic development results? So, peer city benchmark, if you're looking at what other cities are doing that we can learn from. Quantifiable, specific goals for our economic development partner. You know, we talked with Sean about this. I would really like to see us, instead of just talking about things that we want to improve, things we want to do, put some numbers in there. And that, you know, you're the expert. I don't know what those goals should be, but you know, at the end of your economic development plan, there are some things in there like payroll and income tax. You know, what, what kind of increases do we want to see in five years? Jobs created, building inside inventory, you know what? Those are the kind of things that I would like to see in terms of, hopefully we'll discuss in terms of quantifiable goals. The standards by which we evaluate our economic development in cities, and this is the first time I've seen that document that you passed up. So that, that's all I hope you know, that we've, we've kind of got a plan for that. One of the things they talked about at this conference is, in Cincinnati, I think, to, to lead on this, is that when they have an economic development project coming forward in the city council, they get a, a template with some metrics on it. And it's the same metrics every time, things like the benefit ratio, cost per job, city gap funding, how much is the city spending versus the overall cost of the project? And where that gets helpful is not only can they evaluate that project, but by using the same criteria all the time compared to that project or different project. You know, maybe we're, we're at a lower ratio, we're spending more money on this, but there's a reason for that, but at least we'll know about it. So I know there's a lot of stuff in the packet that we get in our gym, but what I'd like to see is a piece of paper that you give us that day. So, because for me, it's hard to wade through all that stuff and figure out what the numbers are. So those are just some of the things that, that we talked about. Then what kind of areas do we want to focus on? We talked, we don't, we want to do some of this on the Parkway. The county's now looking into the 36, 37 corridor, US 23, our legacy shopping centers, you know, we've got the Walmart shopping center. We've got the one where the art supply is. Do we want it, is redevelopment of those important to us? We've had some discussion about hotels. What are our target areas? You know, what is it that we really want to focus on as, as a city over the next few years? What kind of industries, what kind of housing stock? All, all this stuff is just things that we'd like to have discussions about. And then lastly, and I know here we bring this up again, but when we start talking about affordable housing and making things work for developers, I think we have to talk about our inspection fees, you know, refunds, you know, for, for developers, variances on the tree ordinances, our impact fees, our multifamily gap fees. Those are all factors. Again, I'm no expert. I know that we hear from staff, why would we do what we do? But those are all factors in, in how, what we do incentivizes or disincentivizes development. So the last two pieces of this are, we're talking about our comprehensive plan now. Do we want to think about expanding our traditional boundaries of where we're going to annex and where we're not? Are we interested in annexing further regions at 36, 37? Those kinds of things. Should we, we've always had a policy where if you want to water your sewer, you have to annex into the city. Do we want to continue that or should we allow them to have that service and, and charge more for the service? So those are just some of the things that, that over time that we'd like to have conversations about. The next page, this one of our, our consultants at the last meeting, we had talked about development principle statements. And I, I kind of liked that idea of all organizations I've worked in, we've always had commission statements that kind of give us guidance in what we do. These are just my ideas and some talking points. I don't think these should be our principal statements, but I'd like to hear everybody's opinion on should we develop some principal statements? So what our principles are when it comes to economic development and those statements kind of guide our decision-making process. And then the piece that's not on here that I only discovered because of our SWOT analysis. And there's a lot of good things in that SWOT analysis, our strengths and opportunities and all that, and I think it's good to recognize those. But in terms of improving economic development, those are the things we need to talk about. We need to talk about, you know, the weaknesses and the threats. And a lot of these weaknesses that are in that plan are the ones we've talked about a lot, traffic infrastructure, parking, you know, those kinds of things. There's some other things in here, lack of pad-ready sites, city leaders' lack of understanding incentives are necessary. I mean, I don't know how much, this is somebody's perception. I don't know if it's true or not. But I think these two things, strengths and weaknesses, need to be part of that discussion too. So that's, that's kind of what we're coming from, is a starting point. And hopefully that at the end of the discussion, we'll have long it takes, we kind of develop some principles and make some decisions and some kind of set of visions. And Steve Pepper said about where we want to see things go over the next five to 10 years.
Thoughts? Comments? I think, lack of leaders' understanding incentives, I think that's what we did tonight, understand this.
Yeah, that's what I thought always.
I talked to Sean. I think, I, my, my eyes glaze over after three pages of this. I'm like, you gotta dumb it down for us. You know, profitability, payback, when we get the money back, return on investment, it's really some core stuff.
So are we having, is this for follow-up discussions? Is that what we're doing?
I'm sorry, so for what?
Is this for another, for follow-up or trying to do this tonight?
You might need to look it up. We can't.
I'm going to say, yeah.
I mean, I guess, but all I really want to hear is, is this the stuff, stuff that we want to talk about? Does this approach make sense to anybody?
Before we leave tonight, for me, the thing that, I could have listened to this Jim Russell for, you know, hours. It's fascinating to me. But what was really intriguing is when Tom first told me about the whole JEGs, what were we going to call that?
Aftermarket.
Yeah. I mean, about a month ago, we talked about it. I felt, I was intrigued by it. I think it's interesting that Jim said that we're on to something.
Yeah.
So we really got to dig into that. I mean, I think that could drive, I, I think, I think we're in a bad position with Sawmill because of our infrastructure with roads. But I think certainly that JEGs could drive that portion, you know what I'm saying?
Agreed.
As opposed to our initial thought of, you know, Sawmill being like Sean said, you know, the holy grail. It's not. I think it's, I think it's the JEGs aftermarket and that can expand from.
You get one successful project like that and all of a sudden, somebody else is driving.
I was asking Tom earlier that I lose track of what we're doing and, and if, well, just the projects and what's going on. And if we could get a monthly, you know, part of Tom's email or something that.
In the bi-weekly report, I was saying I can provide a, you know, have Sean just provide a snapshot of, of, you know, things happening here, the highlights. We do that in the, in the monthly reports, but God, that's a lot of.
There's so many reports and so many pages and it's so hard to tease out what is, there's 12,000 links to 30-page documents. It's a lot.
Yeah, I think more executive summaries. As long as you have the backup detail, that's great if you want to delve down into it. But just that quick executive summary that gives you bullet points and says, yeah, these are the things in the pipeline. This is what we're working on right now. And then just be able to go on and then.
He can't tell us who it is.
No, I understand, but he, but, you know, within the context of, of what you're able to share and what's already been shared with us, we now know, because things that he told us were going forward six months ago, aren't even in my brain today. You know, they're, they're, they were discard eligible four and a half months ago. They're gone.
I like discard eligible. More of a macro view of just bullet points and summary.
So I'm thinking if someone asks me what's going on with the city, I'm going to be able to rattle off. Yeah, and I'm like, ah, you know.
There's a lot, but you can.
Yeah, if I can rattle off two or three projects that are important to the city, that's.
And, and again, that kind of goes back to using the checklist and, and some type of, of basic metrics that we're able to, yeah, somehow use as a benchmark from one project to a next. And it's not necessarily just only an ED project, but that, that same standardized checklist, metric, benchmarking methodology can be used for planning and development. It can be used in any, you know, in our parks, it can be used for anything. So then we can actually have a snapshot that we can compare over time and project against project, year against year, whatever that is. Because really, the only thing we have today from a, from a numerical analytical basis is our budgets. You know, we can compare that and that doesn't tell you anything, you know, for the most part.
One thing that sort of jumps out as a red flag to me is the, the tree ordinance variances and, and some things like that. I don't want to try so hard to become developer friendly that we lose our, our city's character or the things that people really love about living here. And I don't want this to turn into a Dr. Seuss movie where we chop down all the trees and.
No, but I, I understand what he says, affordable houses. People that are making $13 an hour can't afford to live here. They can't afford the rent and they can't afford to buy here.
In the development of those projects, no, at least I think, I agree with you. I don't want to see that either. I think it's a balance between those kind of quality life issues and some economic realities. It's fighting that balance point that we're comfortable with, where we can do what we can to make things work and still preserve those things you have. I agree. I don't want to see us get rid of those types of priorities because they're a form of our constituents in us.
When we talk about affordable housing, what, I mean, what does that mean exactly? What is affordable housing? And I'm not asking that to be facetious right now.
No, that's, that's very true.
There are the $18,000 houses.
Percentage of your income not exceeding a certain percentage of your income to spend on rent or, or a mortgage, and I don't know if it's 30%.
Are there $80,000 houses being built anywhere?
That's why I think multifamily is important, because most people that are going to start off, because they're going to come here because they got a job, they're probably going to rent. And if the rents are affordable, for what the kind of, the kind of jobs that they're going to be getting, whether they're 13, 15, 18 dollars an hour. Do we have rents, right? Somebody contacted me a while back and said, yeah, I've lived up in the urban city and needed one of them. I called everybody I knew. Can't find them. Just not available. Then there's a waiting list for all of them. There's just not enough of that kind of housing.
And the, the rents are too high.
Yeah.
I mean, the rents are $800, $900. It's just crazy what's going on right now.
And so you, you figure if you're working $15 an hour, $600 a week, you know, 31,200 a year. You look at 30% of that, it's just shy of $10,000 a year, which is less than $1,000 a month. You can't find an apartment in, you can't find a two-bedroom apartment in this town hardly for less than that. And you can't find a house.
Well, in Central Ohio.
Yeah, I mean, you just, you just can't find it. So even though it may not be affordable, I mean, it's not a Delaware issue, to your point, Jim. It's a, it's an overall issue.
And they tend to, they pick up their apartment buying the boat once.
Yeah.
Look at the rents of those.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you're, you're crazy to rent because as much as it is, you might as well buy a house. But, you know, there's a lot of communities like, especially like out in California, you know, where they go out and they say, oh, Mr. Developer, you're building 200 units. Guess what? You're going to set aside, 30 of those units are going to be set aside as, as low moderate income. They're going to do this and it's just like the tree ordinance. You're either going to build them in this or you're paying in lieu of, and you're setting aside resources with which to use that.
Remember we saw that in Texas at the Mera Conference Center, it was the same thing.
But, you know, that, that gets very heavy-handed.
That's government playing a very active role in.
There, yeah, you're, you're doing social engineering at that point, really.
Plus, I think looking at the numbers that we have as far as employees and types of industries, I mean, I feel kind of bad saying this, but how much affordable housing do we want? I mean, I, it sounds really awful, but the jobs we're trying to pursue, you know, if we were a, a large wholesaler, you know, lots of plants, lots of factories, lots of distribution, then yes, we want a lot of affordable houses so those people can get right there. I'm not sure that's where the, the numbers line up.
Pretty chicken egg kind of thing. Exactly. We want to bring those businesses in, people, and they want to have employees here. They got to live. So it's like, I don't know what you do first, but they kind of, at some point, both have to happen.
I think most of our, our restaurants, most of the people come from Maryland.
Well, that's a dangerous thing right now. The service-based industries are suffering and those, the businesses you're talking about count on those.
Right.
As a soft asset, but.
And even the diaper factory, I mean, how many people live up there?
Yeah.
You know?
I think there's, there's an opportunity, I think, with the comprehensive plan update, you know, building on this, in terms of the, the economic development analysis that we'll do as part of that. But part of this is that vision that Steve talked about, is what are we envisioning? Are, if we're envisioning that we want to replicate what Rick and Barker has done with distribution, that's probably not realistic. But that's okay, because we do, not like we don't have distribution centers, but that's, what is that target? 80% of the jobs leaving in the morning, you said what, six or seven percent of those are professional, technical, in terms of the report? And, and you've got it broken down into the different sectors.
Yeah, 61% are white collar of some sort. Yeah, but yeah, those are.
I mean, they broke it into those different categories, but, so, I don't know. There's a lot of, there's a lot of good information here. I think Kent, the, you know, the first question you start with is how can we prove our results? That's, that's a good question and I think we can always get better. I think we just have to identify, some of this is information to council, some of it's actually tools, some of it's money. When I say we need $4 million, you heard, he did the calculation very quickly, he said. 80,000, it's, so we, that's the challenge, is figuring out what are those resources that we need. And you know what it's like every year with the budget. It's, there's just not a lot to go.
And they'll leave for 25 cents a square foot. It's like, wow.
So, you know, that's what our challenge was in terms of trying to figure that out. And that's where hopefully working with developers, we can, we can get there. But we do need that revenue source would really make a difference for us, for roads and whatnot.
You know how we talked about having affordable housing near industrial? EMS in Japan, I was hoping Todd was stuck around. They have a building beside their manufacturer and their employees live there. And they sign up for, I think it's two years at a time. And they live there to work there. And they work long hours, but then they just go right to the.
Oh, style. Yeah, yeah, that's, you don't want to go there. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think at some point, we need to have.
That stuff, yes.
In the way that we have extra meetings, but you kind of can't do this live while you're.
Right. Well, I think tonight was very good.
Let's speak to all, bring that back in.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Look, you saw it for me. Thank you.